All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to Commissioners Court. Today is December ninth, twenty twenty-four, and this is our ten AM regular edition of La Vaca County Commissioners Court. And we will start with the confirmation roll call. Precinct one?
Here.
Precinct two?
Here.
Precinct three?
Here.
Precinct four?
Present.
And the judges here should let the record reflect that all five of us are here and accounted for today. And with that, we will start with our invocation and our pledges. Our most heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this Christmas season. Please watch over this deliberating body today and watch over all of us in La Vaca County, our friends and our families as we celebrate Christmas and the Christmas season, Lord. And we just ask for a successful Christmas season and that we all remember the true meaning of Christmas and what it means to each and every one of us and to the world. And with that, we are just so thankful, Lord, and just please watch over this deliberating body today. And we ask for these blessings in your name. Amen.
Amen.
And now our pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored under Texas flag, I am led by the teachings of the law, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I think before we have, before we get to our announcements, we have one issue we're going to take care of, opening some bids. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, let me, let me just say that we had gone out for bids on a piece of equipment. We had been renting a roller from Anderson Machinery for five thousand dollars a month, and we've basically done that for the whole year. And so that's just not a good use of resources. And so we went out for bids. The bids were to be opened at nine o'clock this morning. There was no one here for the opening of that bid. So the contingency was to open it at ten o'clock here in Commissioners Court. And so I've asked Shanice, she would, to open those bids and read them, and then we'll award them at the next regular session of the Commissioners Court. Okay?
For clarification, we were here. There was people here, just.
There was no one.
I get it. We weren't, we weren't.
No interested party.
We weren't, yeah, we weren't prepared to open bids at nine. I get you. All right, let's, let's have the reading and opening of the bids, and Shane will give it to you. Do you want to have a microphone so it's on record? You okay?
Yeah, I can talk loud.
All right, she can talk loud. Go ahead.
So the first bid was received on December the third at ten twenty-two AM, and it is bid number seventeen sixty-four, and it was received from a company called WEAC Equipment.
Pace spell that.
W E A C.
W E A C O.
Insalania.
Yeah, Insalania.
T A.
Don't feel like Christmas.
It's kind of opposite. It's opposite Christmas because there's a world attached to it. Not nearly, not nearly as exciting.
You said you wanted sealed, so it's sealed.
That's a hell, that is a sealed bid, I guarantee.
It's a sealed bid. Go ahead. That's even sealed.
Well, at least they're able to keep getting smaller.
So. There's no affidavit or conflict of interest questionnaire, nor is there a Form twelve ninety-five, or there's some documents that are typically included in this. The actual bid for the twenty eighteen Bowmag VW two eleven D dash five is seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars, including the new unit multiple. And it has some just specifications of, on the producing equipment. Do you want me to read them out?
I don't think it's. No, you don't need to. That's unnecessary.
We'll, we'll have to review it before we take action anyway, so.
Okay.
Let's just get it recorded on the record that these bids came in.
The next one was received from a company, T Equipment Sales and Rentals.
T Equipment?
Yeah, T dash Quip.
T Quip.
Sales and Rental. And they are from New Hampshire, N H.
Sounds like it. We say this in criminal court all the time, what I call criminal court, county court, is that sometimes court's boring.
It is.
Watching someone open up their mail.
Yeah, there's no documentation of an affidavit or questionnaire for a Form twelve ninety-five, but the price of a Bowmag VW two eleven D cab model is seventy-nine thousand dollars.
Okay.
And the bid number on that, you know, is already, uh, seventeen eighty-two. And it was received twelve-six at five feet.
Okay. And what, what model is, what your model is that?
I don't know if it'll state, but I can see.
Okay.
It does not give you a good model.
For the record, those are the two bids that were, that were received, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and in this, you guys will have time to look at it, review it, and we'll bring it back up on a new gen item at our next Commissioners Court meeting, which would be twelve twenty-three. All right. This concludes our bid, open, opening the bid package for the Bowmag. Anything else? If not, do we have any other announcements? Item number one, any announcements? I'm not wearing my UT tie today because UT did not win, so that's good news for me, or my Aggie fan, Aggie friends. All right, anything else? Going once, going twice. If not, everyone's favorite portion of County Court, Commissioners Court, is the reading and awarding of bids for the purchase of the following roads, so for, for the following items. So item number two, discuss inter-award bids for the purchase of the following items for La Vaca County roads. And we will start, I'm going to let the Commissioners take the, take the lead on this.
All right, the, the first item up that was bid, and that was a level-up patch material, premixed type D and hot mix cold lay type D. Bid seventeen sixty-nine C was from Quality Hot Mix. It was delivered to all four precincts for ninety-eight dollars a ton, and we could pick it up at the plant for ninety.
Could you help me figure out which sheet we're on? On the back? Okay.
They're back to front.
The last page, next to the last page.
Got you. All right.
Okay, the next bid was Colorado Materials, bid seventeen seventy. Ninety-four fifty, delivered to precinct one, two, and four, and it shows ninety-five dollars a ton delivered to precinct three. And you could go to the plant and pick it up for eighty dollars a ton. The next item is Bron-Tech, I mean, the next bid was seventeen sixty-two, Bron-Techs. It's ninety-seven dollars across the board to deliver to all four precincts and seventy-two dollars a ton to pick up at plant. Bid number seventeen sixty-five was Waller Asphalt Company. Delivered to precinct one is one, a hundred and forty-one dollars. Delivered to, that's a ton. Delivered to precinct two, one forty-two ninety a ton. Precinct three, one forty-five a ton. Precinct four, one forty-five seventy a ton, and pickup at plant was a hundred and ten dollars a ton. And I would like to make a suggestion. Bid number seventeen seventy, Colorado Materials, and bid number seventeen sixty-two from Bron-Techs to pick up our material. They actually average out to be the cheapest two we have.
Okay.
Is that a suggestion or a motion?
I will make that into a motion. I'll second it.
Say that again, please?
Seventeen seventy and seventeen sixty-two.
So we're, we're accepting both bids or we're accepting portions of one bid, portions of the other?
No, we're going to just take the whole bid across the board on both of those.
So we're accepting, so we're accepting bids one, seventeen seventy and seventeen sixty-two?
Seventeen sixty-two, the complete bid.
Okay. That was a motion by who?
Me.
Seconded by who?
One. One.
All right, motion made by precinct three, seconded by precinct one to accept on the level-up patch material, premixed type D, hot mix, cold lay type D, to accept bids seven, number seventeen seventy and bids number seventeen sixty-two. Do we have any other questions or comments? And I know it's been customary in the past, if we're not aware, that we do set multiple bids if they're close and comparable.
Especially in the summertime when the state kicks up, we kind of go with the fastest person available.
Availability, lots of times they can't get to, so we rush out better for us.
Right. Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, next.
The next one is purchase of HMAC Regular D Hot Mix Asphalt. We have two bids. First bid is bid number seventeen seventy-three from Colorado Materials. It's eighty-four dollars and fifty cents a ton delivered across the board to all four precincts and sixty-five dollars a ton to pick up at plant. And the second bid is from Bron-Techs, bid number seventeen sixty-one. Eighty-seven dollars across the board to deliver to all four precincts and sixty-two dollars a ton to pick up at plant. And again, we really don't use that much hot mix, but at the same time, when we need it, I would make a motion to accept both bids.
Okay, second. All right, motion made by precinct three, seconded by precinct four for the purchase of H, HMAC Regular D Hot Mix Asphalt to accept both bids, and that's bid number seventeen seventy-three and bid number seventeen sixty-one. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes.
Judge?
Yes, sir?
We need to back up to level-up patch material, the first one we did there. Back up to that next page.
Back up next page.
We have some premixed type D.
At the top.
At the top.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Okay, so we're back, we're going to back up to the first.
Level-up patch.
Level-up patch material.
Yes, pre-mixed type D. We have two bids for that, one bid from Vulcan Construction. For precinct one, it's one hundred twenty-one dollars and ten cents. For precinct two, one hundred twenty dollars forty-one cents. Precinct three, one hundred twenty dollars forty-one cents. Precinct four, one twenty-four dollars and eighteen cents, our pickup at the plant at seventy-six dollars. We also have bid one seven six eight from Lee Red Anders. Precinct one, one hundred nine dollars. Precinct two, one hundred nine dollars. Precinct three, one hundred nine dollars. And that is delivered in precinct four, one hundred ten dollars. So I move that we accept bid number one seven six eight for premixed type D.
Okay, if we could, I'd like to amend that.
Okay.
If we, I think we should take both because.
For the same reason.
For the same reason. My experience, I can't get Lee Red Anders to deliver it.
Okay.
I appreciate their bid, but, and I do, they will get it there, but they do it on a back haul, so they have to be going to you.
Six weeks later.
Six weeks later, yeah. Anyway, I recommend we take both of them, so.
Okay. So you want to revise your motion?
Yes, accept bid one seven 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 B and bid one seven six eight.
Okay, motion made by precinct one to accept both bids of the level-up.
Premixed type D.
Premixed type D?
D.
Second. Okay, we had seconded by precinct two. So we had a motion made by precinct one, seconded by precinct two to accept seven, bids number seventeen, seventeen seventy-seven B and seventeen sixty-eight. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Edward, for picking that up.
Good, good kid.
Thank you, Edward.
You got it.
All right, so now we are on what?
The front part.
Coverstone?
Yep.
Anyone wants to take a lead?
Coverstone material.
Be from a page.
Pre-coded, uh, purchase of coverstone materials, pre-coded PB three, PE three, PB four, PE four, uncoated paving rock. First one up is pre-coded PB three. Bid number seventeen sixty-nine B is quality hot mix. Seventy dollars a ton delivered to precincts one, two, and three. Seventy-one dollars a ton delivered to precinct four and sixty-five dollars a ton pickup at plant. Bid number seventeen seventy-one, Colorado Materials. It's seventy-four dollars a ton to precinct one, seventy-two dollars a ton to precinct two, seventy-three dollars a ton to precinct three, seventy-four dollars a ton to precinct four, and fifty-five a ton to pick up at the plant. Bid number seventeen sixty, Bron-Tech Materials. Seventy dollars a ton across the board for all pre, all four precincts and forty-five a ton to pick up at plant.
Okay.
And I'm going to let y'all, fellas, what do y'all think about that?
Anybody want to make a motion?
Sure.
Sure.
Quality hot mix and Bron-Techs both are at seventy dollars for precinct one, two, and three, and precinct four is at seventy-one from Quality Hot Mix and seventy from Bron-Techs. So I would move that we accept bid number one seven six nine B from Quality Hot Mix and bid number one seven six zero from Bron-Techs.
One second. Okay, motion made by precinct one, seconded by precinct two to, on the pre-coded PB three, to accept bids from seventeen sixty-nine B and seventeen sixty. Any other questions or comments?
That's also the plant?
Also the plant. Plant at sixty-five from Quality Hot Mix and plant from Bron-Techs, forty-five dollars.
You also have one, you got a bid in between there on plant pickup from Colorado.
Yes. You want to make a, I'll make an amendment to that. I'd like to add Colorado Materials pick up at plant for fifty-five dollars a ton.
Okay.
So y'all can use it all three of them, and pick up.
Yes.
Okay. Precinct one, you want to amend your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made by precinct one, seconded by precinct two for pre-coded PB three to pick up, deliver prices from seventeen sixty-nine B and seventeen sixty. And then also to accept bids from, on plant pickup, I'm sorry, for deliver prices on seventeen sixty-nine B and seventeen sixty, and then also to accept the plant pickup price from seventeen sixty-nine B, seventeen seventy-one, and seventeen sixty. Does that sound right?
Yes, sir.
On the same page? Okay, I'm highlighting those. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. All right, pre-coded PE three?
Pre-coded PE three. Bid number seventeen sixty, Bron-Tech Materials. Seventy dollars across the board to deliver all four precincts. Plant pickup is forty-five dollars a ton. Bid number seventeen seventy-seven A, Vulcan Materials. Eighty-eight-ten delivered to, a ton delivered to precinct one. Eighty-seven forty-one a ton delivered to precinct two. Eighty-seven forty-one delivered to precinct three. Ninety-one eighteen delivered to precinct four. Plant pickup is forty-three dollars. I would like to make a motion to accept Bron-Techs, bid number seventeen sixty, across the board, even plant pickup, and accept bid number seventeen seventy-seven A, plant pickup at Vulcan Materials for forty-three dollars a ton.
Second. Motion made by precinct three, seconded by precinct four on pre-coded PE three to accept the bid entirely on seventeen sixty for all four delivered prices to precincts plus plant pickup and also to pick up a portion of seventeen seventy-seven A's bid of just the plant pickup price. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next up, pre-coded PB four?
Pre-coded PB four, bid number seventeen sixty-nine B, quality hot mix. Sixty-seven dollars a ton for all four precincts delivered. Plant pickup is sixty-two dollars a ton. Bid number seventeen seventy-one, Colorado Materials. Seventy-four dollars a ton to precinct one, seventy-two dollars a ton to precinct two, seventy-three dollars a ton to precinct three. Seventy-four dollars a ton delivered to precinct four. Fifty-five dollars a ton pickup at plant. Bid number seventeen sixty, Bron-Tech Materials. Again, seventy dollars a ton delivered to all four precincts and forty-five dollars a ton deliver, at plant pickup.
Okay, do you hear a motion?
I will say this, Quality Hot Mix is a little cheaper, but they deliver on back hauls. So in the, when you're busy, in the summertime with the state, you're going to wait on them a while to get it. And I would like to make a motion to accept all three bids on PB, on PE, PB four.
PB four. Across the board, all.
Across the board, accept them all, yes.
Second.
PB four.
Motion made by precinct three, seconded by precinct four to accept all three qualified bids on pre-coded PB four from delivery to plant pickup. And that's accepting bids seventeen sixty-nine B, seventeen seventy-one, and seventeen sixty in their entirety. Going once, going twice. Any other comments, questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Uh, next we have pre-coded PE four.
Okay, we have two bids on that. Bid number seventeen sixty, Bron-Tech Materials. Again, seventy dollars a ton delivered to all four precincts and forty-five dollars a ton picked up at plant. Bid number seventeen seventy-seven A from Vulcan Materials. Eighty-seven-ten a ton delivered to precinct one, eighty-six forty-one a ton delivered to precinct two. Eighty-six forty-one a ton delivered to precinct three. Ninety dollars and eighteen cents a ton delivered to precinct four, but they have forty-two dollars a ton pickup at plant. I would like to make a motion to accept bid number seventeen sixty from Bron-Techs for all the bids for the precincts and plant pickup and also Vulcan Materials, bid number seventeen seventy-seven A, pickup at plant at forty-two dollars a ton.
Second. Okay, motion made by precinct three, seconded by precinct four for pre-coded PE four to accept bid seventeen sixty in its entirety for delivery and plant pickup and a partial acceptance of seventeen seven, seventeen seventy-seven A for plant pickup only. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next up is uncoated grade three.
Okay, uncoated grade three. Bid number seventeen six nine B, quality hot mix, precinct one, forty-nine dollars. Precinct two, forty-nine dollars. Precinct three, forty-nine dollars. Precinct four, forty-nine dollars. Plant, plant pickup at fifty-five dollars. Bid seventeen, one seven seven one, Colorado Material. Precinct one, fifty-four dollars. Precinct two, fifty-two dollars. Precinct three, fifty-three dollars. Precinct four, fifty-four dollars. Plant pickup at thirty-five. Bid number seven, one seven six oh, Bron-Techs. Precinct one, fifty dollars. Precinct two, fifty dollars. Three, fifty dollars. Four, fifty dollars. Plant pickup, twenty-five dollars. Vulcan did not bid. I'll make a motion to, uh, bid seven, one seven six nine B, quality hot mix for all four precincts. Plant pickup, and not plant pickup. And then I'd like to take a motion for seventeen seventy-one all the way through for all four precincts and plant pickup and also bid seven, one seven six oh, from Bron-Techs for all precincts and plant pickup.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion made by precinct four, seconded by precinct three on uncoated grade three to accept a partial bid of seventeen sixty-nine B for delivery only, delivery prices only and to accept bids number seventeen seventy-one in entirety from delivery to plant pickup and also to pick up seventeen sixty in entirety from delivery to plant pickup. Any other questions or comments?
Un.
What? None?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm moving too fast.
All right, so, sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Next up, uncoated grade four.
Uh, uncoated grade four. Bid number one seven six nine B, precinct one, from Quality Hot Mix. Forty-nine dollars. Precinct two, forty-nine. Precinct three, forty-nine. Precinct four, forty-nine. Plant pickup at fifty-five. Bid numbers one seven seven one, Colorado Material. Precinct one, fifty-four. Precinct two, fifty-two, fifty-three for precinct three. Precinct four, fifty-four. Plant pickup at thirty-five dollars. Bron-Techs Material, bid number one seven six oh, precinct one, fifty dollars all the way to precinct four, fifty dollars. Plant pickup at twenty-five dollars. Again, too, I will make a motion to accept Quality Hot Mix for precinct one, two, three, and four. Not the plant pickup, and that is bid number one seven six nine B. I would like to also accept Colorado Materials bid, uh, number one seven seven one all the way for all four precincts and plant pickup and like to accept Bron-Techs bid number one seven six oh for all four precincts and plant pickup.
Okay.
That's my motion.
All right, did I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by precinct four, seconded by precinct three on uncoated grade four to accept a partial bid on seventeen sixty-nine B of delivery prices only to pick up the, to accept bid number seventeen seventy-one in its entirety as delivery prices and plant pickup and to accept bid number seventeen sixty, delivered prices and plant pickup. Any other questions or comments?
And the reason that we bid on taking, accepting more bids than just one because of availability of it, most of your contractors and vendors that we buy from, they deal with the state, and the state usually comes number one. The counties are number two usually. It's hard to get materials. The counties are number two usually. It's hard to get materials that we need it. So that's why we have to take more than one bid.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Alright, next we have soil stabilizer, is that right?
No, we had no bid on soil stabilizer.
No bid on soils, okay. So, soil stabilizer, quicklime, pebble bulk, powder lime has been tabled. Correct? Do you have a motion to table that, because there's no bids?
So moved. Second.
I heard four and one. Motion made by precinct four, second by precinct one, to table, uh, warning any bids of soil for soil stabilizer, quicklime, pebble bulk, and powder lime, because we, we had no bids.
Yes.
Uh, all the, favor table, and you guys say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Alright, um, AC five, AC ten, MC thirty, and CRS, uh, what, two? Anyone wanna walk me through this? Does anybody wanna explain to the public what these things are?
Dennis? Well, the, uh, the, this is asphalt material we, we're dealing with, is with the, uh, AC fives, AC tens, and MC is the primer. CRS two is an emulsion. What that means is basically a water-based, uh, material, which we like to use a lot. And the reasoning is, when we do pave our own road, roads, excuse me, is that the temperature that we have to get it up to, to put it down, is about a hundred and fifty degrees. When you start using the AC fives, the temperatures you need to put it down is like three hundred and fifty degrees plus. So we look at the safety of our employees. If that hot asphalt gets on employee, I mean, it's gonna take your skin off. So, but we do have options, and there's certain times of the year that you use different ones. So we just, you know, the cooler weather, the cooler weather versus the warmer weather. So that's what we have to work with. And then there's a primer also in here that we deal with.
Okay.
So like so.
You wanna start with AC five?
Okay, AC five. And it's asphalt, price per gallon, uh, we'll go to bid number one seven five eight. AC five is three seventy-nine. AC ten is three seventy-nine. MC thirty is five nineteen. And the CRS one P?
Three point four.
Three twenty-four, and that's a CRS two P. And the CRS two is two seventy-four. And again, this is bid for all four precincts. And we'll move to as, uh, Martin Asphalt, bid number one seven seven eight. AC five is two fifty-seven. AC ten, two fifty-seven. MC thirty is four oh seven. The CRS is not available, and the CRS two is two eighty-two. Ergon asphalt and emulsions, bid number one seven six six, AC five is three twenty-seven. AC ten is three twenty-two. MC thirty is not available. CRS one P is three fifty-five, and the CRS two would be two eighty-five. And, uh, let's see, I would like to make a motion to accept Martin Asphalt, bid number one seven seven B.
Okay.
Seven seven eight.
Oh, one seven seven eight, different classes. And, uh, if anybody else has any discussion, if we wanna get, take another bid?
The only question I have is on that CRS one P, at three twenty-four, how often do they all use, or we use that?
I do not use it. It depends on other precincts. It may be a difference.
It sounds like on C, CRS one P, they're substituting CRS two P.
Correct, yes. And this is, is a type of emulsion.
Okay. So how do you wanna do this?
You wanna just throw it in there and have, uh?
Go for it.
Okay, on, uh-
Cleveland asphalt.
Cleveland asphalt, bid number seventeen fifty-eight. I would just like to add the CRS one P, and, uh, for three twenty, and add that four, a gallon, and then CRS two for two seventy-four a gallon. Be the last two.
Okay, so, hold on a second. Precinct four started, let's, let's, uh, precinct four-
Okay.
You, you had it first, uh, Martin, on AC five?
Yeah, uh, bid number one seven seven eight, Martin Asphalt, all of the bids.
All the bids.
Okay, and then bid number one seven five eight, Cle- Cleveland Asphalt. We will take the CRS two P at three twenty-four a gallon, and then the CRS two at two seventy-four a gallon.
Okay. Alright, and then we're, are we excluding ergon at this point?
Uh, we're not taking anything with ergon.
Okay, they were hard bidding, okay. Alright, had a motion made by precinct four?
Second.
Second by precinct three, on the price per gallon for AC five, AC ten, MC thirty, CRS one P, and CRS two, to accept all the bids, the bids in entirety from Martin Asphalt, that's bid number seventeen seventy-eight. We'll accept the entire bid, and then a backup, uh, bid, partial on seventeen fifty-eight for the CRS two P and CRS two. Does that make sense?
Correct.
Alright. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Alright, now we are on limestone. Who wants to start me off? Limestone, one and a, one and a half inch road base per, per ton.
Okay, uh, bid number seventeen sixty-seven from Steffek Interest. It's twenty-three dollars a ton delivered to precinct one, twenty-two dollars a ton delivered to precinct two and three, and precinct four is twenty-three dollars a ton. Bid number seventeen sixty-nine C, Quality Hot Mix, precinct one is, uh, stockpile location is twenty-seven fifty a ton. Precinct two, stockpile location is twenty-seven dollars a ton. Precinct three, twenty-seven dollars a ton. Precinct four, twenty-seven fifty a ton. Delivered to job site location, precinct one, twenty-seven fifty a ton. Precinct two, twenty-seven dollars a ton. Precinct three, twenty-seven dollars a ton, and precinct four, twenty-seven fifty a ton. Bid number seventeen seventy-two, Colorado Materials, stockpile location, twenty-five dollars a ton delivered to precinct one, twenty-three dollars a ton delivered to precinct two, twenty-four dollars a ton delivered to precinct three, and precinct four is twenty-five dollars a ton. Delivered to the job site location, uh, twenty-seven dollars a ton for precinct one. Precinct two is twenty-five dollars a ton. Precinct three is twenty-six dollars a ton. Precinct four is twenty-seven dollars a ton, and plant pickup is seven dollars a ton. Bid number seventeen thirty-seven, Bron-Tex Materials, stockpile locations, thirty-one dollars a ton to precinct one. Precinct two is thirty-one dollars a ton, and also precinct three and four is thirty-one dollars a ton. Delivered to the job site location, precinct one through four is thirty-one dollars a ton. And six dollars a ton at the plant to pick up. Bid number seventeen seventy-six, Mahi Check Services, stockpile location is twenty-seven dollars a ton delivered to all four precincts, stockpile location. No plant pickup. And let me back up on bid number seventeen sixty-nine C. Plant pickup for Quality Hot Mix was thirty-two fifty a ton.
You got seventeen seventy-two and seventeen thirty-seven had bids on plant pickup?
Yeah.
Did you read those?
Yeah, I did.
You did, okay.
Seven and six, yeah.
Alright, so do you hear motions?
Okay, two of these bid numbers, they're, they're kinda on a, on a backhaul basis. They always have something to go up there and come back, so. I'd make a motion to accept bid number seventeen sixty-seven, Steffek Interest. Bid number seventeen sixty-nine C, Quality Hot Mix, on, on everything except the plant pickup. The delivery to the four precincts. Bid number seventeen seventy-two, Colorado Materials, accept the bids on the stockpile location and job site location and plant pickup. Bron-Tex Materials, bid number seventeen thirty-seven, uh, I would just go for the plant pickup at six dollars a ton.
Okay.
And then bid seventeen seventy-six, Mahi Check Services, uh, the stockpile locations at twenty-seven dollars a ton.
Okay.
That make sense?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, motion made by precinct three, second by precinct four, uh, to accept bid number seventeen sixty-seven in entirety, to accept seventeen sixty-nine C, the stockpile location and job site locations, um, without picking up and noted that loaded, loaded at plant price, uh, seventeen seventy, seventeen seventy-two, pick up the bid, accept the bid in entirety, seventeen thirty-seven to only accept the loaded, the, uh, pick up at plant price, and then, uh, bid number seventeen seventy-six to pick up the bid in entirety. Does that make sense?
Right.
Stockpile locations. Stockpile locations. Okay, uh, any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Next is, uh, price of limestone, three quarters to dust per ton?
Per ton, yes. Uh, bid number seventeen sixty-seven is Steffek Interest. Uh, precinct one, twenty-three dollars a ton. Precinct two and three is twenty-two dollars a ton. And precinct four is twenty-three dollars a ton. Bid number seventeen sixty-nine C, Quality Hot Mix, uh, precinct one is twenty-eight fifty a ton. Precinct two and three and four are twenty-seven fifty a ton. Delivered to the job site location, precinct one, twenty-eight fifty a ton. Precincts two, three, and four, twenty-seven fifty a ton. And it's thirty-two fifty to pick up at plant. Bid number seventeen seventy-two, Colorado Materials, delivered to the stockpile is precinct one, twenty-five dollars a ton. Precinct two, twenty-three dollars a ton. Precinct three, twenty-four dollars a ton, and precinct four, twenty-five dollars a ton. Delivered to the job site location, precinct one, twenty-seven a ton. Precinct two, twenty-five dollars a ton. Precinct three, twenty-six dollars a ton. Precinct four, twenty-seven dollars a ton. Bid number seventeen thirty-seven, Bron-Tex Materials, stockpile location, thirty-one dollars a ton straight across the board to all four precincts. Job site location, thirty-one dollars a ton across the board to all four precincts, and six dollars a ton pickup at the plant. Bid number seventeen seventy-six, Mahi Check Services, twenty-six dollars a ton delivered to the stockpile location, all four precincts. And if I missed it, bid number seventeen seventy-two, Colorado Materials, it was seven dollars to pick up at the plant.
Okay, can I hear a motion?
Yes. Basically, I'd like to keep, uh, the three quarter to dust the same way as the inch and a half road base to accept, accept bid number seventeen seventy-six, uh, Steffek Interest, all four-
Seventeen sixty-seven.
Seventeen sixty-seven, I'm sorry. All four precincts delivered to their stockpile. Uh, bid number seventeen sixty-nine C, Quality Hot Mix, uh, accept the bids to stockpile location and job site location without accepting the plant pickup. Bid number seventeen seventy-two, Colorado Materials, accept stockpile location prices and job site location prices and plant pickup at seven dollars a ton. Bid number seventeen thirty-seven, Bron-Tex Materials, just accept the, uh, six dollars a ton loaded plant. And bid number seventeen seventy-six, accept Mahi Check Services, stockpile locations, all four precincts.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
Okay, on the price of limestone, three quarter to dust per ton, it's gonna go the exact same way as the, uh, one and a half inch road base. Uh, so the motion by precinct three, second by precinct four, to accept seventeen bids, number seventeen sixty-seven in entirety, uh, seventeen sixty-nine C in entirety, except the, the plant pickup price. Seventeen seventy-two, the complete bid in its entirety. Seventeen thirty-seven, uh, only awarding, picking up the load at, uh, to pick up at plant price, and then seventeen seventy-six, to pick up that bid in entirety as well. Any other questions or comments? Did I get that right, Barbara? Okay. Uh, hearing nothing, uh, hearing none, no arguments or questions or comments, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Uh, last, on the limestone, is price of limestone, one inch and, and down per ton?
No bid.
No bids. Okay, so we're not gonna award anything on that then. Alright, uh, what else we got? Is there any more limestone?
No, that should be, we're going to, uh, pit run and screen gravel, purchase and delivery.
Um, I should suggest on vegetation management services, we're gonna discuss that on item number three. We did not any, go out, we did not receive any bids in time.
In time.
So we're gonna go back out for bids on vegetation. Uh, so, purchase and delivery of various pit run gravel and screen gravel, one and a half inches and down. Who wants to walk us through it?
Okay, unless somebody else wants to. But anyhow, bid number one seven six three for holder gravel. We have precinct one, two, three, and four, pit run gravel per ton delivered to. Would be precinct one, fifteen fifty, two, molten, seventeen fifty. Precinct three, sixteen fifty. Precinct four, sixteen fifty. Plant pickup at seven twenty-seven, seventy-five. Screen gravel. Precinct one, seventeen twenty-five. Precinct two, nineteen fifty. Precinct three, seventeen seventy-five. Precinct four, seventeen seventy-five, and pickup eight twenty-five. Uh, also, we have to Annie County Road, pit run for precinct one, would be sixteen twenty-five. Precinct two is nineteen seventy-five. Precinct three is seventeen seventy-five, and precinct four is seventeen seventy-five.
For-
Pit run, delivered to, per ton to location.
Okay, I'm lost.
Okay, I am lost. I apologize on that. Let me just back that up.
Let's go back up and go across, right?
Right.
Okay.
I thought they had the same bid numbers. Okay, back up just, uh, we'll move to, uh, bid number seventeen seventy-nine, Fred Store. Pit run gravel delivered to stockpile location. Precinct one, twenty fifty-four. Precinct two, twenty-two fifty-eight. Precinct three, eighteen fifty. And precinct four, seventeen fourteen. Pickup at the plant, ten dollars. Screen gravel. Precinct one, twenty-seven, tw- excuse me, twenty-one fifty-four. Precinct two, twenty-three fifty-eight. Precinct three, nineteen fifty. Precinct four, eighteen fourteen. Plant pickup, eleven dollars. I will make a motion to accept-
Can, can I ask you a question before we make a motion? What's the difference between the top and the bottom?
This is gonna be delivered to Annie Cap, Annie County Road. These are the stockpile prices.
Okay, the, the top in the, in the box is, is to stockpile?
Yes.
Okay.
You have stockpile and then, uh, two.
Okay, and then the bottom two are for any- Okay, and then the bottom two are for any local, any county, got it, okay. I'm with you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
But anyhow, I'll make a motion to accept bid number one seven six three Pahoda gravel. And also, uh, bid number one seven seven nine Fred Store.
Second.
And, and it's both of those in their entirety?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, motion made by precinct four, second by precinct three for. Purchases of pit run gravel and screen gravel, one and a half inches down, delivered to stockpiles, uh, to accept bids seventeen sixty three and seventeen seventy nine in their, in its, in both of their entirety. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Next we, okay, next we have, just so we're clear, now this is delivered to same, same, uh, bids basically, but, uh, delivered to Annie County Road, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And we have bid one seven two seven Pahoda gravel. Delivered to Annie County Road and precinct one. Of pit run sixteen twenty five. County Road, I mean precinct two nineteen seventy five, precinct three at seventeen seventy five, precinct four at seventeen seventy five. That is pit run and a new screen from Pahoda. Would be precinct one seventeen seventy five, precinct two nineteen seventy five, precinct three eighteen seventy five. And precinct four seventeen, I mean eighteen seventy five. Uh, bid number one seven three oh Fred Store. Delivered to Annie County Road. Pit run precinct one twenty two ninety two, precinct two twenty four ninety six, precinct three twenty eighty eight, precinct four twenty fifty two. Screen. Gravel precinct one twenty three ninety two, precinct two twenty five ninety six, precinct three twenty one eighty eight, precinct four at twenty fifty five. And I will make a motion to accept bid.
Twenty fifty.
You caught me, thank you. I was wondering why I was gonna miss one of them. But anyhow, backing up, I will make a motion to accept bid number seventeen twenty seven with Pahoda and also bid number seventeen thirty with Fred Store.
Second.
On the pit run and screen gravel delivered to Annie County Road, we have a motion made by precinct four, second by precinct three to accept bids number seventeen twenty seven from Pahoda and bid number seventeen thirty from Fred Store. Do you have any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Okay.
We have a bid number seventeen twenty seven and he has two bids seventeen sixty three and seventeen twenty seven?
No, seventeen twenty seven is last year's bid number, I just didn't change it on the bottom, so it should be seventeen sixty three seventeen seventy nine.
Okay.
Alright. Look at these guys, that's pretty sharp.
I'd like to object to say that I'm being unfairly singled out and these prices are, I'm having to pay more. And that, that just doesn't seem, that's not equitable to me, that's just not, I just don't think it's fair. So I just want, I'll go on the record just to say that.
Okay.
On the, on the record, he's out of that county nowhere, that's why, no.
Uh, precinct two wants to know whether he's been unfairly singled out and paying higher prices, but I think, I think that the, the leader over here is precinct four on all these high prices.
Definitely. And again too, when we go to the gravel pricing, there is a difference between the gravels. From one location of the state to the other location of the state, from one part of county to the other part of county. Depending on the roads, wherever we're at, what type of materials will work better and whatever the road base is already, the stabilizer's the best. So that's why, if we have options to use different types of gravel.
So I have a question to, there's quite a bit difference in pricing between Pahoda and Fred Store, but that's, is that, is that based on the quality of the gravel or is it based on types of gravel?
That's where I just kinda came from, about qualities and types.
But I would, based on y'all's method of operation, you're gonna, I mean, always it's your best interest as a precinct to be conservative and go for the low, lower price when applicable.
Correct.
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Yeah, we use that as a, as a backup because in the event that there's an issue, uh.
Sometimes, sometimes just our four precincts can hit a gravel pit and clean them out and then, then we got a bid.
Gotcha, okay, so for pit run and screen gravel delivered to Annie County Road, had motion made by precinct four, second by precinct three to accept bids. Number seventeen sixty three and seventeen seventy nine, both of those bids. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Alright, we're moving along. Everyone's favorite. Subject gasoline and diesel fuel. So this is, this is gonna cover gasoline and diesel fuel for all commissioners precincts, sheriff's department, senior citizen center. Uh, that's both at Halesville and Yocum, Lavaca County EMS, uh, fuel stations in Halesville, Shiner and Molton. And emergency management and maintenance. And does emergency management still have theirs at, uh, precinct three? Is it? Use precinct three?
Yeah.
Okay. So that, anyway, but it covers all of our diesel, gasoline, diesel fuel for the county essentially. So who wants to walk us through?
You want the short condensed version?
Short condensed version, I don't know.
Is there such thing, is there such thing as a shortened condensed version?
Do the shortened condensed.
The short one?
Short condensed.
Shortened condensed.
Shortened condensed is that, uh.
Magnifying glass.
Uh. Patriot Fuel put in a bid of point one two five lower than, uh, Schmidt and Sons. On every, uh. Lavaca County entity that buys fuel. So I move that we award the fuel prices, uh, to, uh, Patriot Fuel.
Second.
Okay, motion made by precinct one, second by precinct four. To award all fuel prices of gasoline diesel, uh, because they were lower by how much?
One point two five.
One point.
A point.
Point.
One two five.
Which is quite a bit.
That's just a markup.
It's a markup.
It's, yes.
It's a markup that each fuel company marched up prices based on their terminal price. And so Patriot Fuel markup was point one two five zero for all departments. Across Lavaca County and Schmidt and Sons. Had different markups for different, uh.
Entities.
For different departments, yes. But Patriots was across the world.
Across the world.
Lower than all Schmidt and Sons.
Gotcha. Okay.
If you need copies, you know where to get copies.
Yeah.
I just wanted to comment.
Sure, go ahead. Question, question or comments, but, both is. So I, I noticed here that, uh, on some of these items, um, there is a, uh, twenty cent tax, I'm assuming that's the state tax? So the state of Texas charges us a tax on fuel? We're going to go after that in, uh, what number?
Yeah.
On item number eight, we're gonna discuss that in item number eight, what we're trying to do. Okay. Uh, just so, because it is relevant, on subject, uh, number eight, discussion approved resolution of support for county motor fuel tax exemption. And, uh, this is across the state. Uh, we're trying to get all two hundred and fifty four counties involved with that. Asking state to, to drop that. Okay. Because it's, they're taxing us. Anyway, they're. Yes, so we're, we're gonna take that up to item number, item number eight. But yes, they are, that is correct. Okay. Um, I had a motion made by precinct one, second by precinct four to approve, uh, Patriot Fuel is our fuel provider for all gasoline diesel fuels for the county. Uh, any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Alright. Next we have labor and equipment for road construction services.
One bid, H and C Construction, bid number seventeen eighty. Uh, on their option one bid, per square yard was three dollars and ninety cents a square yard and their option two. Uh, per square yard was four dollars and seventy five cents and basically that's either one shot of seal coating or two shots of seal coating.
One shot for three ninety, two shots for four point seven five, okay?
And.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Alright, motion made by precinct three, second by precinct two to accept the one and only bid from H and C Construction, bid number seventeen eighty. For labor and equipment for road construction. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. That was fun.
Yeah.
It was real. It was real and fun.
I know.
Alright, um, I know we missed a couple things. I think this came up during, during the year on soil stabilizer and quicklime. Do we need to go back out for bids on that? We did not put that, this on our agenda, but I don't see why we couldn't pick that up?
We could try again, but I don't know if it's, uh, how many plants are there, Edward, three? He told me it was, the closest one to us is in Granberry.
Gran?
Uh, that Dallas area.
Really?
So that's.
If I understand my, they're, they're not bidding it because they, they have exclusive market and they know if you need it, you're gonna have to go get it from them, basically, so.
So basically, we can go to Parker Brothers and get our lime by the sack. And pound it too.
Good luck.
I don't be doing that. Getting lime by the sack.
Alright.
I ain't getting no it, hard pound sack. We haven't done it before.
I mean, we, that's the thing, if, if they need it, they've had to go get it, but, because no one bid it.
If they don't bid, you, you're. You're kinda at their mercy, so.
Alright, we're, we're moving on, item number three, discussing or approve advertising for vegetation management bids for Lavaca County. Uh, says here, it's on my bench, I looked. Do I hear a motion?
Don't move. Second.
Motion made by precinct three, second by precinct four. To approve advertising for vegetation management bids for Lavaca County. Uh, those bids will be published in the paper starting this week, December ninth, and it'll run through December twentieth. And, uh, sealed bids must be sent to Shayna, our OPLA counter, County Auditor, Lavaca County Courthouse, P.O. Box two eighty three, Halesville, Texas. Um, and then we will open bids on, they must be in. Must be plainly marked, uh, back in our, in Chan's office by ten thirty A.M. on December twentieth. And then, uh, we will open bids at ten forty five on December twentieth and we will read the bids and vote on that on December twenty third. So, I heard motion made by precinct three, second by precinct four. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? That motion passes. Number four, discuss and approve certificate of exemption from subdivision requirements for William Meitzin. It's found on, it's in precinct one, found on page one through seven of your agenda packets.
That's a piece of property off County Road sixteen. He was selling some land to his neighbors, his neighbors already have access to a public road. So they do, uh, qualify for an exemption, so I move that we, uh, uh, grant a certificate of exemption to William Meitzin.
Okay. Motion made by precinct one.
Second, second.
Second by precinct three. Motion made by precinct one, second by precinct three to approve the certificate of exemption from subdivision requirements for William Meitzin. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Number five, discuss and approve certificate of exemption from subdivision requirements for the Cook family estate, that's also on page, precinct one, found on page eight through thirteen.
That's also mine, it's on County Road, uh, State Road FM nine fifty seven, right up the road, uh, it's four siblings dividing some land up amongst themselves. It hundred and thirty five point nine sixty four acres. And they all also have access to the, uh, State Road, uh, County Road, uh, FM nine nine fifty seven, so. We need to grant them a certificate of exemption in its, uh, Cook family estate.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by precinct one, second by precinct two to approve the certificate of exemption from subdivision requirements for the Cook family estate. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Number six, discuss and approve certificate of, of exemption from subdivision requirements for John Dixon. And James M. Dixon, that's also found in precinct one, found on page fourteen through nineteen.
This is a hundred and twenty four acres that two cousins have. And there's a piece of property between the two that they're gonna subdivide for both of them, they also have access to the, uh, to a, uh, county road. So they qualify for an exemption also, so I move that we, uh, extend a, uh, exemption to John Dixon and James, James M. Dixon.
Second. Motion made by precinct one, second by precinct two to approve the certificate of exemption from subdivision requirements for John Dixon and James M. Dixon. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? That motion passes. Uh, number seven, discuss and approve certificate of exemptions from subdivision requirements for Margaret Ann Mendel Estate, that's found in precinct two, found on page twenty through twenty three.
Yes, Your Honor in court, uh, Margaret Ann Mendel Estate is, uh, subdividing twenty nine point six acres of land off County Road two oh five, it's, it's a family, uh, inheritance. And so upon examination, the application, I asked that the, be the determination of the Commissioners Court of Lavaca County that, that this, uh, meet the requirements for certificate of exemption from subdivision requirements.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made by precinct two, second by precinct one to approve the certificate of exemption from subdivision requirements for Margaret Ann Mendel Estate. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Number eight, as we just discussed in the bid process, is a resolution of support, uh. I'm not sure the exact county that's been in charge of this, but I bet you there's been probably a hundred and fifty of these signed already that we're asked to sign one and send, send it into. There's one county judge is gonna get, be responsible delivering this to, uh, the Capitol. Um, but number eight, discuss and approve resolution of support for county motor fuel exemption. And that's found on page twenty four of your bid packet. I can read it, or y'all wanna just, I mean, it's basically saying that, um, schools are already, uh, Texas public schools are already exempt from fuel taxes, uh, which helps alleviate the schools and why shouldn't we? We're, 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 uh, government, it's just as well, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay.
Second.
Alright. Motion made by precinct four, second by precinct one to approve the resolution of support for county motor fuel tax exemption. Any other questions or comments?
Let's do it.
Alright. If, if not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Uh, all opposed, same sign? That motion passes and we'll get that signed and we'll get that shipped off to the appropriate parties. Uh, number nine, acknowledge Governor Abbott's proclamation renewing the disaster proclamation concerning border security, that's found on page twenty five and twenty six. Do you hear a motion to acknowledge?
Yes.
Second.
Motion made by precinct four, second by precinct three. To acknowledge Governor Abbott's proclamation renewing the disaster proclamation concerning border security. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Uh, second one is acknowledge, number ten, acknowledge Governor Abbott's proclamation declaring and renewing a state of, of disaster in certain number of counties. Based on the existence of serious drought conditions that pose an imminent threat of widespread and severe damage, injury or loss of life or property. That's found on page twenty seven and twenty nine. Do I hear a motion?
Don't move, second.
Motion made by precinct three, second by precinct four to acknowledge the governor, to acknowledge, to acknowledge Governor Greg Abbott's proclamation declaring and renewing a state of disaster in certain number of counties based on the existence of serious drought conditions. Any other questions or comments? Only thing I will say is we are still in a burn van, I know that people are getting anxious and excited about it, but it's, uh, someone sent me the text this morning, let me pull it up. Greg, was that you?
Uh, I don't, I don't, I don't usually update this.
Uh, Tim, Tim, Tim bid, uh, Tim FYI for the meeting, KBDI index still sits at an average of six hundred eighty nine. Five hundred average is, is definitely, we're in a burn van drought status, six eighty nine, so we're six, that stands for six point eight nine inches defined moisture underground. And that's, that's just the soil conditions that we're in. We've got some moisture, uh, we're very thankful for the recent, recent rains, but just not enough to break that, uh, penetrate that soil and get down in there.
Yeah, you know, they just worked, they just doubled, uh, went from six eighty nine to six forty five.
So it did go down some.
So it went down by forty points.
Okay.
You know, at this point, we, we're about to get five inch rain to get us back to all the time.
Hope, hopefully it's coming. I think rain has been ordered. Alright, I hear, uh, a motion to acknowledge the, uh, great Governor Abbott's drought declaration.
Don't move, second.
Okay. Well, I had, uh, let's see, I had motions by three and four already. Motion made by precinct three, second by precinct four, all those in favor of acknowledging that proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Number eleven, discuss and approve application for materials for fiscal year twenty twenty-five local government assistance program based on transportation code two point, two zero one point seven oh six assisted by the Texas Department of Transportation, that's found on pages thirty and thirty-two. Uh, this has been floating around, I think we just failed to put it back on our agenda.
I'll make a motion divided twenty-five percent for all precincts.
That sounds good to me. What did he say?
Uh, come on, everybody, you made the motion, right?
I had a motion made by precinct four, second by precinct three to divide this up, uh, by four, for twenty-five percent each.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments?
It'll come out to be a lot.
I'll, I'll talk to you after a while.
Thank you. It'll come out about sixty-six hundred dollars.
Ronald Burke and I was gonna roll over, but he's still living, but he'll, he'll roll out of bed, probably what's happening. Uh, any other questions or comments?
No.
Alright, uh, so, I have a motion made by precinct four, second by precinct three to approve application for materials for fiscal year twenty twenty-five local government assistance program based on transportation code two zero one point seven oh six assisted by the Texas Department of Transportation, and to split those funds evenly, twenty-five percent across the board to each precinct. Twenty-five percent evenly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes. I'm gonna give Ronald Burke and I a call.
I'm close. I'm close.
No one fault, nobody said a word, that's great.
What kind of, what?
Item number twelve. Item number twelve, discuss and approve accepting fiscal year twenty twenty-five Senate Bill twenty-two funds for the LaVaca County Sheriff and LaVaca County Attorney's Office, we have already applied and been approved for those funds, we just need court approval?
So moved. Second.
Precinct, uh, motion made by precinct one, second by precinct three to approve accepting fiscal year twenty twenty-five Senate Bill twenty-two funds for the LaVaca County Sheriff and LaVaca County Attorney's Office, all those in favor say, any other questions or comments, sorry. Uh, the only thing I will say is, uh, back in the summer, we did not, with the sheriff's budget, we did not go over personnel, there's no way that we have potential change coming up and all this going on, so we're gonna come, after, uh, the new sheriff is sworn in in January, we're gonna be coming back to the court asking for some changes to that budget and personnel, um, and probably some of those funds will be used for that. I'm just gonna make that a public comment, uh, but anyway, do I have a motion to accept the funds?
Yes.
Okay, well, I had, already had motion made by precinct one, second by precinct three. Alright, all those in favor of accepting the funds, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Alright, number thirteen, acknowledge monetary donation from the Dixon Allen Foundation in amount of ten thousand dollars to the LaVaca County Press Gang in care of their records, retention archives, there hear motion?
Yes.
Second.
Motion made by precinct one, second by precinct two, any questions or comments? I don't see anyone here from the Press Gang, it was probably short notice, but, uh, we just wanna publicly, these next two items publicly thank, um, the Dixon Allen Foundation for all they do for us, uh, those, those funds are just so valuable to come in and help us preserve the records. Uh, before the Press Gang was involved, I think they had records stored in box cars somewhere on the, on county property, and they got wet and nasty, and now we've got dry, secure area to keep all those records secure, and it's just wonderful that the Dixon Allen Foundation, um, participates with us and, and, and helps us out, so thank you to Dixon Allen Foundation. So I had a motion made by precinct one, second by precinct two, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Uh, the last one, but not the least, uh, from this is, uh, item number fourteen, acknowledge monetary donation from the Dixon Allen Foundation in amount of nine thousand dollars for LaVaca County Justice of the Peace Video Magistrate. Uh, I don't know how you want to save, I know Halli, uh, Judge, Judge, uh, Hall is here, Judge Yakel is here today, I know, I think Judge Greenwell, he's at a conference, he actually wrote the grant, uh, but it is important to me that our JPs are in that jail magistrating inmates, these inmates sometimes are not in their best mind, mindset, uh, some are violent, some are whatever, so we're gonna put a better system in place where they don't have to be confrontational, um, you know, when you're taking someone's liberty away from them and they're right in front of you, uh, we need a better process, uh, they get, they get mad, so, this has been a long time coming, we're gonna see some changes, to, changes to that along the way, this nine thousand dollars helps us with that, also helps with video magistrations, so they don't have to always drive to the jail to go do that, sometimes they can do that from afar, so, uh, Judge Hall, Judge Yakel, and thank y'all for working on this, um, if, if we get another chance for Judge Greenwell, or, uh, for, well, we call, he was Judge Greenwell, when this concept came up, now he'll be Sheriff of Lake Greenwell, I know he wanted to say something about it, um, there's gonna be lots of changes coming, so, but we wanna thank the Dixon Allen Foundation for, again, we asked for help, we, there was a need and they delivered, and so this is gonna be a much needed asset to the county. So there hear motion on that to acknowledge the monetary donation.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by precinct two, second by precinct one to acknowledge the monetary donation from the Dixon Allen Foundation in amount of nine thousand dollars for the LaVaca County Justice of the Peace Video Magistrate, uh, equipment and software. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes. That's the last of our regular agenda items, uh, next up is consent agenda, do we have a motion to move into consent?
Second.
Motion made by precinct three, second by precinct two to move into consent, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are now on consent, our microphones will go off until we're out of consent. Okay, we are out of consent, there hearing any other business of the court? Uh, if not, uh, our next court meeting date will be, uh, at ten a.m. on December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, uh, and with that, I'll hear motion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by precinct three, second by precinct four to adjourn, all those in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, we are adjourned till December twenty-third, thank you.